Okay, meeting will come to order. We'll open with public comment. Anyone who wishes to make a comment, please come to the podium. Five minutes? Three minutes, sorry. Almost gave an extension there. Three minutes, and please address the board. I didn't think we were taking what you left. Okay, if we have nobody, we'll proceed. Toby Van Egan, Transfer Station Manager.
Tonight, request into, of course, permission from the board to sell our closed container. We have the closed, we've got the new one in place right now, and we had, I had a phone call in one town that was looking, wanted to purchase it. So I'm just asking the board, if possible, if they want to put up a sale, we can do that. Got a rough estimate, probably around $2,500 you might get, or something like that. Plus or minus.
Don't have any problem with it? You don't anticipate we'll have any need for another container?
No.
Okay.
But I think it'll be sitting there. And the...
Oh, I have to make a motion, that's right. I made the motion to approve the... I didn't see it, I'm sorry.
You're getting him in practice.
Yeah. I move to grant the Transfer Station Manager permission to investigate selling one of the town of Lee's old closed containers. Any discussion?
No.
What? Call for a vote, we just did that. Okay, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
I would don't expect there'd be any nays, so I don't ask for abstentions. You didn't ask for abstentions, did you?
Okay. And the other thing, the annual report I have, if you reviewed that before the meeting, would like, if possible, to get approved. Have that report signed and approved. I don't know if you've seen that in your agenda.
I'm on second.
Okay.
Sorry.
Go ahead, do anything.
You want me to hand the annual report to you, to sign it, or?
So I'll move to accept the Transfer Station's 2017 Annual Facility Report to the Department of Environmental Services.
Any discussion?
I'm sorry? Any discussion? Any discussion?
No, I'm on second.
Okay, I mean, you, okay, anyway.
This is what you get paid the big bucks for, though.
I know, I understand that. I appreciate that, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
So we'll move on. Julie Glover?
You have a vote on the table. You have to call for the vote. Call for a vote? We just, we made a motion to second it. You have to do, come on for the vote. Just call for a vote. All those in favor?
All those in favor? So we'll move on to Julie Glover, Town Administrator.
So when the Lee USA Speedway submitted the documents for the public hearing and the license application, their spreadsheet indicated a number of events where they wanted to extend the time from eight hours to potential 10 hours. The ordinance calls for an eight-hour maximum unless the board approves otherwise. But we did not transfer those times onto the license, so that's what we're here for tonight, is to just make sure that the board understands that they are asking for the extension of time for a number of events. And honestly, it would be my recommendation going forward, so for next year, that we actually have a conversation about it, rather than simply putting it on a piece of paper. So in other words, that the board actively makes a decision to extend the time for one or all of the requested dates. I know someone here is from the racetrack that the board has any questions about why they need to do that.
Can I speak up?
Sure.
Yes. It's really, and I don't know why Judy, Judy put it down for actually the ACT race and Oktoberfest. We're really only looking for Oktoberfest, only for the fact that we've never gone past even the eight hours for Oktoberfest. It's just the fact that it's our end-of-the-year event, and it has to finish. So if we have a red flag, or a rain delay, or whatever, it gives us that buffer to make sure we can get the whole show in. That's the only reason we, and I don't know why she had it on Oktoberfest, that's not, I mean, excuse me, the ACT race in April, that's not a race we were looking for, it was just the Oktoberfest. And that's the only reason why.
Okay.
So just the October 6th and 7th races?
Yes, just the Saturday and Sunday.
With the rain dates, yeah.
Chief, you have any thoughts on it?
Something has been done every race season. They rarely use it, but it is, if it rains on a Saturday, they can't get all the practices qualifying in, and then they try to finish it up on Sunday. Or if it rains Sunday morning, which is typical that time of year, gives them time to drive to the track and still get their race schedule in. It's never been an issue in the past when they've used it. Never had any complaints about the noise or anything. They're still usually out of it by 9:30 at the latest.
So I move to extend the operation time from, to 12:00 PM, 10:00 PM on the following dates. April 15th, 2018, with a rain date. April 22nd. October 6th, 2018, with a rain date. October 20th and 22nd. That's what I'm reading. And October 7th, 2018, with a rain date of October 27th and 28th. Is that right?
Yep.
I don't have to have the April dates, just the October dates is fine with me.
Okay.
So if you remove the April 15th with the rain date of the 22nd of April, I will second that.
Okay.
I don't want to come in and sound greedy.
So we go with April, just April 22nd?
April, you can take right off the equation, it's just the October...
Just take April off?
Yep, it's just the October 6th and 7th with the rain dates for those two dates.
Okay, so it's October 6th, 7th?
I do have one question for you while I'm here. I told you on the to-be-announced dates I would come to you before I booked anything, and I don't know if I can discuss this now, or I need to book a time. And if I need to book it later, I'll just throw it out there for you to think about. The to-be-announced on October 13th, I'd like to do a demolition derby like we did last year in September. And I haven't totally booked the date yet, we're leaning toward May 20th for a monster truck show in May. So I don't know if that's something you can give the blessing on today, or I need to come back to it.
No, I'd like you to send us something.
That's fine, that's fine. Like I said, I just wanted to, I just wanted to make sure, I told you I'd communicate what I was doing, so I wanted to make sure you knew. And I'll have Judy set up an appointment for us to come in next week or whenever, and we'll take care of that then.
Okay, we appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Selectman LaCorte's on his way.
I'm sorry?
Selectman LaCorte's on his way.
Okay.
Was there a second on that?
I seconded it if he took out the April 15th, 2018 with the rain data. I believe he was amenable to that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Next item is the draft of the 2018 Voters Guide. I drafted this and then sent it to all of the department heads, and then the chairs of any committees that had a, more an article of interest, and to John Tappin as a representative of the trustees and trust. Couple people got back to me with a couple of changes, and so that's the version you have in front of you tonight, the one that's already been reviewed by, unless any other member of the public has anything to say, by the interested parties.
I have a couple of things.
Sure.
Under number five, in the description, let's see, it's the last sentence, say purchasing the parcel from the church. Can we change that to Lee Church Congregational? In number six, under the description, to second sentence, with assistance from an archaic intro from the select board.
Okay.
Civic board.
Yep.
Same thing with the next to, next to the last sentence, and that same thing?
Yep, the select board.
And in terms of the last, it says move forward with construction and renovations, because they're renovating plus constructing. I don't know, I'm not too adamant about that one, but if you could tweak that.
Which sentence are you looking at?
Article number six, last sentence, it says move forward with construction and renovations, because we're renovating plus constructing.
Oh, yep.
I don't know, it's...
Well, we're going to renovate and construct, but we can put that in.
Last one I had is under number 20. Under the description, it says, this is the next to last sentence, it will be amenable and will be funded by the Lee's Conservation Fund. What is, it's the Conservation Commission that's funding it at that point.
And the correct technical term is the Lee's Conservation Fund.
So that's what they're called? Okay.
All right.
Statute.
All right, thanks, Judy.
I'm good with that.
Great to do it.
Other than that, I like it.
Do we want to let Chairman LaCorte get settled and see whether he has any comments or suggestions?
I suppose.
I couldn't start at 6:00, though.
As opposed to... We could start at 6:00 again, that would work well for us.
Where are we?
She says that's the official name.
We're talking about the Voters Guide?
Lee's Conservation Fund.
I'm okay with it.
All right. Any other comments, questions? Okay, great, thank you. We will get this out to, again, just as a reminder, this gets mailed to every residence in Lee. Last meeting, I mentioned that the library furnace had been having, one of the library, the old library furnace, had been having some trouble, and that the company that we now have doing our maintenance recommended that be replaced, you have for some more information. It is a 1988 Magic Chef, so the furnace is 30 years old. There's a large amount of corrosion and rust that has spread into the heat exchanger, which could compromise air quality, and so therefore that's why they recommend replacing it. New would probably be somewhere between $5,000 and $6,000.
Pretty much what the other one cost.
Yeah, pretty much.
And that's complete installation and all that stuff.
Yep. So if the board is in agreement, I'll go ahead and get a written estimate for that and bring that forward.
And they have a, a statement of the warranty?
Oh, I'll get one on that, yeah.
That sounds good.
And when we get it installed, can we just forward that information to the CIP people so they will have that going forward?
Yep.
That'd be great. Can I assume they're okay till we meet again to do this, or it's not so sketchy that it's going to die, you know, tomorrow?
Well, one never knows.
Well, they're not saying, hey, you're going to do this right now, or?
Well, I think they want us to do it sooner rather than later.
Soon as possible. No, I understand that, but I don't, I don't know if we can wait two weeks and then, can we just give her approval to do it up to $6,000 and just be done with it?
Can. I'm also, I would also be asking that you, we take the money out of the town building capital reserve fund, which does require a vote of the board.
Okay. Go ahead, make your motion. I move that we expend up to $6,000 from the town buildings capital reserve fund to replace the furnace in the old part of the library, and instruct the town administrator to get quotes for that installation.
Get quotes and move ahead?
Quote.
Okay, thank you.
We have a second, any further discussion? You okay?
Mm-hmm.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item, as you may recall, we've been doing this the past few years, getting $500 from the Health Trust for our wellness program, hoping, as we do every year, that we can get more employee participation. It's really hard to get our employees to participate. We had, how many people did we have last year, for the last time we did something?
We did the bingo, which was, how many people? One, two, three, four, five, six?
Six?
Six people.
Who's that coordinator?
Denise.
If it's not for lack of trying.
It is not for lack of trying.
There was no suggestion at this point, I do not feel any in his voice.
I just didn't know who's doing the coordinating for that.
Denise does that.
I think it's probably could use a phone. Please go ahead and let it go. I move to accept $500 received from the Health Trust for the Wellness Program, funds to be spent on campaigns within the Wellness Program, and grant Lee Town employees permission to participate in campaigns within the Health Trust Wellness Program as presented by the Health Wellness Coordinator through the 1218 calendar year.
Second.
I should like you didn't have to read that one.
Jeez.
Seconds already been done. Further discussion? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. There's a lot of Health Trust in there.
So again, I'm sure you know that we've talked a number of times, and we do have plans to try to scan or assessing documents in a couple of months. Once we get past the town report, and March 13th, we'll start working on that project by putting together, I guess, an RFP, find a firm to do it. But as part of that, I think you also know that I've been talking about trying to find ways to just cut back on the amount of paper that we use. Certainly every time we photocopy a document, there's a cost associated with it. The cost, the cost is negligible, so that's not the number one driving reason to do this, it's just simply not sustainable. Every time we have a piece of paper, then we have to do something with a piece of paper. We either have to file it, or even if we shred it, even if we recycle it, obviously there's still energy and a cost, and so on and so forth to do that. So I would just ask the board to consider whether they'd be interested in trying to do these meetings with less paper. I mean, we have cut back, and we don't make full copies of the packets for the board anymore. Obviously, you get the full packet emailed, kind of as everybody does, because we send it out as an email blast. But I'm wondering if the board has any interest in doing the meetings via a tablet. So in other words, you would all have a tablet, and the documents that you need for the meeting would be on tablet, and then the only paper that we would bring would be things that need to be signed.
I'm assuming that tablets would be remaining here, and not to be taken home.
I'm not interested.
Why not?
I want a piece of paper. Technology will fail all the time.
Don't we have a company that takes care of that stuff?
Yeah.
I'm not interested.
Are you interested? I'd be interested in it, but I don't carry a smartphone, so I need to have something in front.
I'm joking. I don't care what... I think it's worth trying, for sure. I mean, if Selectman Buggie wants a piece of paper, at least we'll be reducing it by two, you know, so.
My thought on this...
If Selectman Buggie has a piece of paper, and let's try a couple of tablets and see how it works.
Boy, we were joyful tonight. I missed quite a lot, didn't I? Well, the thought on that is, you know, obviously the tablet will be in front of you, then you can look at the materials and so forth, and there'll be no paper that's really required. But the requirement from my end is the tablet remains here. Unfortunately, Denise would have to bring the tablets along, and make sure the condition of her running, and so forth. That way there, it doesn't go home with us, it stays where it belongs at that point.
I notice when I watch the Durham, the Durham meetings, that they use apparently Chromebooks, I'm going to guess they're Chromebooks, they're not tablets, some of them are using tablets. The Chromebook looks to me to be a little bit more user-friendly, as opposed to working on top of the screen, it's got a keyboard. But it has a very unique operating system, so there's a lot of programs you can't run on a Chromebook.
Well, actually, we probably don't need a lot of programs, except for...
Yeah, that's right, I mean, exactly, I just don't know.
Well, this would almost really just be a read-only.
Yeah.
It's just a PDF.
It's just, well, maybe looking to do it in a different way than a PDF, but, because sometimes the size of those files becomes problematic.
Whatever you think, I'll beat it once, fine with me.
I guess what I would suggest is we'll, I'll work with our IT provider, and we'll get one, and figure out how we're going to, you know, are they going to be PDFs, are they going to be in the cloud, and just test drive it. And then if it works out, we'll move forward from there.
Yeah, I think we ought to try.
It's a try, let's see what happens. A trial program.
All right, thank you.
As a side note, when we're talking about paper reduction, how are we doing on our digitizing?
Well, that's what I'm saying, we're going to start that project up once we get through the vote and the town report and all that, but it's definitely at the top of the list of things that we need to do. I guess, I don't know whether Mr. Buggie has mentioned that recently at any Heritage Commission meeting?
But, no, maybe, no.
Perhaps you might remind them? I met with two members of that committee, it was kind of a while ago now, and just said, this is what we're going to do, and we're going to be getting rid of all this paper, and whether the Heritage Commission wants to even look at what it is, or?
Well, I think they wanted to be notified what you're throwing away.
It would be all of the assessing records.
Okay. Well, if you can just let, because I think Anne is your conduit, that's part of the document committee?
Okay, I'll vote this, okay, yep.
Because I think that's how they're interfacing with you.
Okay.
So if you can give Anne a list of what you're throwing away, and give her a date in terms of, unless we hear from you, it's gone as a whatever?
Yeah.
Because I think that would be helpful.
Are all the documents now in this room?
There's all the ones. There's some other...
There's some of the storage contingents.
Now, this, that's more than a town third. I think there's one or two boxes, but it's, it's not, all the historical stuff is over here.
Yeah, and I think that there are still assessing records in the vault.
The...
Tin can.
The tin can?
Yeah.
But I think that's, but that's your stuff, though.
Yeah, assessing records, right.
Yeah.
But I don't know that there's...
Some things are Karen's.
And some things are Karen's, yeah.
Well, there's some things in Karen's office, too, remember?
Okay. I thought that stuff came over here.
Oh, I don't know what's in it, and then there's the, in the gun vault, there's stuff in the gun...
Oh, the safes are still, yeah, the safe is still there, but everything that's in the back office is gone.
Right, right.
All that's gone, and it's over here. But yeah, just give them a list, and then, if you don't, let us know before X, it's gone.
All right, thank you.
What else you got? I had to move on to item five, and I move to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Believe it or not, this is a state form.
You're kidding?
Yeah.
It's got crossing outs and stuff on it. You wanted it back, you said.
Oh, yeah, thank you. Reduce, reuse, or something, recycle.
That's what you said. You don't have to look at all that stuff, you can throw it out.
Bring, all the shredding.
Why is it a separate thing? We have them in the consignment.
I don't know, because it's just correspondence, there's nothing to accept.
Any comments on the correspondence?
I like to mix it up. I don't want to know. That's right.
Okay. Item number seven, I move to enter a non-public session, do we have to oversee 91-A colon 32 ADNE. Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call, hold, Mr. Buggie?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. LaCorte, yes, you announce. One of the non-publics I want to seal, so I move to seal. Second.
Second.
Roll call, hold, Mr. Buggie?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. LaCorte?
Yes.
This is the one to seal, these two are public. We finished business? Your business? Any other kind of business?
TCVC meets tomorrow, we're kind of pamphlet, handout at the transfer station, and we're talking about some other ideas, maybe a grassroots, grassroots email blitz or something, also mailing. I don't know if there's anything else, but we're looking at other things to do besides the presentation delivered session. Our last post, no.
Is it, is one more display board?
One more display board to do, so we've done four already. The last one is the church property. I think that's it. But I sent you, I think I forwarded to you the comments, or a comment, I got about the presentation, that was the only email comment I got, I got other verbal comments, I liked what they saw. So that was good. So hopefully it gives them enough information so they can make an informed decision. See.
No, I thought the presentation was nice, and even the stuff that was in the EPR, which was all the pictures and everything else, it was a nice historical outline, it was a really nice job. One thing about the planning board meeting, you know, the Chinburgs' property up there by the gravel pit, he bought that from Cheyney, and, you know, it's got a number of house lots on it, they just subdivided the, there was two or three townhouse-type blocks, condominium-type things in the middle, now they're all single-family.
This is on Pickham, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
And so, and I understand the builders say they're going to stop working in April on the property.
Anything with the property that's across from the restaurant?
No, quiet at this point. No, quiet at this point, nothing at this time.
What's, what's the latest on Bedrock Gardens?
We're waiting, at this point, there's been a formal discussion whether it's allowable under the rules at this point. Most people just thought that that's wrong, or moved this thing along, but under the agritourism law, is this truly agritourism? Because basically, agritourism is ancillary to the actual farming.
So this is the primary?
Right, but it's the primary, but there's no real farming going on here.
So who's going to make that?
It's NGA, it's with the lawyers, now our lawyers are looking into it. When the, we get that response, they will, discussion.
You guys said that they have to have adequate facilities, or they can't open this year?
That is correct, they have to have a, at this point, everything is stalled until we hear back from the lawyers. However, they'll look at that piece, they have to have a park lot, apartment facilities, everything has to be in place to open. They can't run it like the way it was before. Anything else on your side? Anything else? Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Adjourn.